So we're going to go to item 24. Item 24, as I had stated, was considering proposed amendments to an appointed employee's compensation program. First off, you know, given my description under orders of the day, did anyone want a fuller report on it? Because if not, I will just move the recommended action. And I'll go by a show of hands. I do see hands raised with regard to the public. And so I'll let you know that if you are raising your hand to speak on oral communications, if you would please lower your hand for a moment so that we could, so we can consider item 24. I don't see any hands raised from council or the public for that matter at this point. And so I had, I will go ahead and move item number 24, the recommended action, which is adopt resolution number 21-070, amending the appointed employee's compensation program. And second, adopting resolution number 21-071, approving the first amendment to the city attorney employment agreement, which is attachment C of the packet, and authorizing the mayor to execute the first amendment to the employment agreement with a new city attorney for the city of Cupertino. And so I see council member Moore, you have your hand raised. Did you want to second that motion?
Yes, second.
Okay, great. Do we have any discussion from our council? I don't see any hands raised. Madam City Clerk, well, I suppose I should give Chris an opportunity. Did you want to say a couple of words? This is formally your start as a city attorney, or would be, for our fine city.
No, I'm just that I'm very happy to be here, excited for this opportunity, and hope to work with the council and staff and the citizens to really provide the level of services that I think the residents of the city expect.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Madam Clerk, if you would please vote us on the motion.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you.
We are now on item number four, that is, a city manager update on emergency response efforts. Greg, please take it away on that item number four.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council, and welcome aboard, Mr. Attorney. So it's great to be here providing tonight the, my first update on our pandemic response. Today in Cupertino, there have been, there are 954 cases by zip code with 965 cases in the city, as reported on June 15th for the city council. Let's see, for our vaccinations, for the population that's 12 years of age or older, the lowest vaccinated area in Cupertino is 79%, which is quite high, but most areas are 87 to 95% vaccinated. And that's again for the 12-plus population. As we read about...
I am so sorry. I took this out of order. Your number four, brief council member reports, was number three, but I skipped over oral communications. And so I duly apologize for that. Let me go...
I was following your lead.
No, no, I apologize. You know, I was looking at, how did I miss this? You know, I apologize to our council, our staff, members of the public. We are on oral communications. And so...
Thank you.
That, thank you, Mr. City Manager. For the attendees that have your hands raised, we have Charlene Lee, we have Jennifer Griffin, and an attendee denominated call-in user one, which should be on the phone. And I will tell any call-in user now that when your turn arrives to talk, you'll need to push star six on your phone in order to unmute yourself. So, and again, with communications from the public, you'll need to raise your hand by the time the first speaker is done speaking in order to be called on. And so we have those three hands raised at this point. Welcome, Charlene.
Hi, cup's rep Sandy Becker. And there's a serious election fraud on 2019 and 2020. 2019, Liang Zhao didn't show up to vote for mayor and both of elegant health alone. She is not a registered voter, but she voted. She received ballot, and I think mayor should talk about this. Also, while cup rep Sandy Becker and we already asked mayor Darcy Paul for since January 2019 to talk about this and about my being here for one year. And after election, I'm former Cupertino city council candidate Charlene Lee. I be put into jail, and the judge extol me 480,000 bail, and they kicked me out from my house at 888 Candlewood Drive, Cupertino. And the car last called, bet 2264. She, he said as a reshow order on Judge Jeremy Nederland, December 28, 2017. But that day, judge didn't issue any reshow order. I am asked city council, city clerk to show up to all residents of Cupertino to this reshow order because this is fabricated by DA Jeffrey Lawson. I recall the police today, and they reject to file police report. We need to arrest La La Xiao at EK Road because she fired false police report. She also lied, issued death threat to her son, Ever Young, UC Santa Barbara student. And then Diana Chen is Hongwei's daughter commits suicide at NYU 2004. So did Hongwei ask a student about in 2005, Abda Nieman, to write an article, Cupertino progressive leadership, Hongwei? Because Chanty Mayor Monica Singer, Owen Candacecar, and those found already be sued. I want to know who paid attorney fee for Monica Shin and Chanty Mayor, Chanty Mayor, and also in Davy Gobster. Davy Gobster and the money, wrote an article on September 22 about candidate running for Cupertino city council 2020. They only introduced four...
Okay, our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. First of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Lowenthal and his family for the wonderful donation of the trail from McLoughlin Ranch up to Linda Vista Park. My husband has already been out there looking at it. He can't wait to go hiking on it. So I am very, very happy that the Lowenthal's were able to think of what a wonderful gift this was to the city of Cupertino, because it will be there for all the generations. And it does provide a really nice access point for people walking, hiking, et cetera, to go from McLoughlin Ranch and Blackberry Farm and go up to Linda Vista. My husband was at Linda Vista a lot because he went to Monovista High School. But it's just a really, really thoughtful gift to the city. And may I encourage anyone else that has property that could be donated to please do so. I think that if you're looking at a lasting testament to a family, giving parkland is something that is going to be there for many, many years. And we're very, very appreciative of it. I'm also concerned about AB 1401, which is to reduce the parking, I don't know what you call it, levels of parking that cities and counties, et cetera, have to provide across the state. I'm really concerned that the public is not getting to vote on this. And this is, this is a potentially extremely, this will affect the whole state. And I feel like I have not been able to vote on it, and it's going to affect every, everything that I do. I am older, I cannot walk well, and I cannot, I need my car. And I just think that AB 1401 is very thoughtless, kind of like slam it through and not think about everyone. People need to carry their pets in cars, and you also have to take, I have to take my mother to doctor's appointments and shopping in the vehicle because she cannot, she could walk better than me, but she is an elder, very elderly person. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is call-in user one, and that's followed by our final speaker, caller 5172. Welcome, call-in user one. You'll need to push star six on your phone.
Thank you, Mayor, dear council members, and all the audience. This is a matter of, I think some people might know, I just briefly summarize it. And for the upgrade structures, small buildup in the backyard, in good face, build twice. And we know it's very frustrating process. So on the pretext, we build the smaller and the way the city wanted. And we even ask for the permit that time, they say don't need it. We beg them. You can see how frustrated, how difficult to us, and how much catastrophic to us. So we beg for them to get, to give us, they don't need it. And even that kind of situation, and with the, some kind of disadvantage from the court because pandemic, which is separate issue, we still actually try to work with them to get the symbolic permit, which other cities are in this situation, they have various citations for, for, for the co-viliation, which this one is not, but we still, that's what we tried to abate in the first case in the court, and effect of 20 years. And the other cities still allow them to have application for permit, for even with use for living quarters, and this one's not. And again, this is for good faith, as you guys know. The thing we try to talk about here is we like to know the nature of the source of the city about this buildup, since it's directly affect, directly affected the neighbors, got no issue about this buildup, and it's all new material after torn the first one, previous one down, and which is also smaller now, got no safety issue because it's all new material and not for living purpose. The communication is not from immediate effect neighbor. And we are strongly questioning the legitimacy of any communication that originated outside the neighbor, particularly nothing in such person reside in the neighborhood, even residing in the city. Why should we force to defend a position or voice from people not have any relevant connection to the city? Any irrelevant trust, the personal business matters should not be considered. And also because, refer to the early email and the conversations regarding the scene boards, which is not war, and also is a lot higher ground than neighbors and decorated some items there, which the small place built up is about ninety-seven square foot and a 12-foot high is easily to be misunderstood and magnified. So please consider what we are saying here. And any questions, let us know, and we like to keep working with you guys. And thank you for your help and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker and final speaker is caller 5172. Welcome. You'll need to push star six on your phones. So there is a caller...
Hello, yes, this is Wang Ningwen. I got a lot of telephone you saying that regarding the redebate man program, we already maintain the reach and cutting the reach very regularly and nicely.
Just stop there. I'm going to go ahead and refer you to item number 20, 22. Okay, so we're on, we will be on item number three after this. Most, most of the items are going to be on consent. But item number 22 is what you'll want to speak on. This is oral communications, which is relating to anything that's not on the agenda. So we debatement will be on item 22. So please stand by for that. We don't have any other public speakers at this point, and so I'll take us to item number three, that is, brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. Does anybody from council have anything that they would like to share under this item three? Councilmember Way.
All right, thank you, Mayor Paul. So very briefly, on June 23rd, council member Moore and I went to talk with the Cupertino Historic Society. We had a three, two or three R consultation, and that's part of our committee. And then on July 14th, we did a tour of the Snyder Hammond House. And so we are going to have a report back soon. And then on June 24th, I attended the SV at Homes Housing Element kickoff, just to understand how the housing elements kick up by other organizations. And let's see, one last slide since June 25th, I attended the Cal Cities Peninsula Division's, their legislative division discussion, and to listen to all the current legislatures just to get ourselves familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Way. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just have kind of a procedure question, because councilmember Way and I, and also council, councilmember Willie and myself, had some subcommittee work that we did. Do you want us to present during item five, the report on committee assignments? And then councilmember Way and I have some, some asks that I'm not sure if that should go under future agenda items, or would you like us to just put this, put the, the ask in under item five upfront, and then we can reiterate it later on in the meeting if you like? But what kind, how do you want the process to go?
Yeah, I would say that actually all of those apply that you're suggesting. It can be a brief report here. It can be brought up under item five because that is a committee. It's not one of our beginning of the calendar year assigned committees, or the end of the calendar year as it were, because that's when our transition takes place. But you can bring it up in item three or five with regard to future items. That could be suggested here, or in future agenda items at the end of the meeting. And so I'm not going to be overly stringent with regard to this. If you wanted to make some follow-up comments to what councilmember Way was saying with regard to the subcommittee that you and Shunfer won, that would be perfectly fine right now. But again, this is, this is brief, right?
Yes, yes. Okay, so I'll do this briefly. So councilmember Way mentioned the time that we spent in the touring. We discussed the mission programs, history, finance, and the history of the Snyder Hammond and Stockelmeier houses, and the past efforts and the current status of their partnership with the city of Cupertino. And we asked what's known about the surrounding cities and how they are managing historic preservation. We also did look at the Quinlan Center museum space and what their needs are there. I'm going to just skip down to save time. For next steps, we collectively wanted to direct staff to draft a comparison table of what historic preservation efforts in Cupertino look like in comparison to our surrounding cities, considering the organization of historic preservation teams. For example, is there a city committee, a separate nonprofit historical society, parks and recreation support? What facilities do the cities provide for museum space, storage for curated objects, administration, and office space? How is funding provided? Is it city grants, annual support from private entities, fundraising? And the cities to consider review of would be Campbell, Sunnyvale, Los Gatos, Saratoga, Mountain View, and Palo Alto. CHS, the Cupertino Historical Society, has begun this survey and will offer their draft summary to assist staff in starting this project. And then we would like to have this comparison data brought back to council for discussion and determination of how to preserve historic assets within our framework, and consider what ad hoc or standing committees would best be able to provide meaningful progress and direction, and determine how to best support and organize our historic preservation team, what funding levels are appropriate, and come up with a plan for Stockelmeier, which is city-owned, and Snyder Hammond House, which is CHS-owned, and then evaluate how to best assist CHS with their space issues. Councilmember Way, would you like to add anything to that? Or did I, I'm hoping I grasped everything that people were saying.
No, I think you have everything.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, councilmember Moore, and thank you, councilmember Way. So that's a great summary of the activity. I think that with respect to a future item, I'll visit that with, with city manager Larson, and see where we can order that in the future as well. So thank you for your work on this subcommittee thus far. Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised next.
Just real briefly, you know, 5G cells in residential areas being of a concern to a significant number of residents. And so just a brief update, you know, I'll just touch on, you know, having met with Verizon twice and letting them know that, you know, we really want to be working with our residents, and for the most part, they're supportive of that. Now, for the, for the details of the update, the Peter Chu has come and spoken before. The cell that was going to be in front of his house on Howard Court is now going to be out on Miller. William Wu, who lives on Molton Drive, and the cell that was going to be on his sidewalk, is now going to be across the street on the edge of Tree Oak Park. So it is possible to have cells shifted from where the providers would prefer them to be, to try to alleviate the concerns of the residents. We do have a study session or agenda item for the 5G cell policy that will be coming back to us. And I hope at that point in time, we will be able to really enlist city staff in working with the residents directly to address their concerns. And I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, so I'd like to bring everyone's attention to a new event that I'm starting. So back in 2019, I started the Coffee Talk, and we went into different coffee shop. And now it's pandemic, so I'm hoping to start the Cooper Talk business so that we can talk about how we can help our business recover. And so initially, I set a date of July 16th, but we didn't get a lot of response from the business, so we are postponing this. However, I'd like to, the idea is, in this event, business can come and do a three to five-minute pitch of what you do. And we would like residents to come too, because together, those who shop, who work in Cupertino can come together and figure out what kind of business we want in Cupertino, and how we can help existing business to thrive. So I hope if you are interested in helping with this effort, contact me, email me at liangchao@cupidino.org. And someone else is thinking, maybe this should not be virtual because people are tired of virtual meeting. But then with a new variant right now, so initially I thought, maybe I should go back to the coffee shop. But with a new variant, maybe it still has need to be virtual. And then, yeah, please contact me if you are interested in helping this effort. And then the teenagers, we will, we will do another Cooper Talk, teens and seniors, to connect teenagers and seniors on intergenerational talk. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. And councilmember Moore, I do see your hand is raised, but I'm basically going to provide each councilmember one opportunity. Did you want to...
Okay, well, there's a second subcommittee that I was, well, actually, there were two more subcommittees I was assigned to. So councilmember Willie and myself, we were assigned to work on contracts. And I don't know if councilmember Willie wants to provide his report, or do you want me to? I can go either way.
I'm sorry, would you mind putting this in item number five?
Okay, no problem. But I do want to suggest, mention something, that the economic development survey was something that councilmember Willie and I had discussed in our subcommittee, and that this is a big issue that I think we probably need to bring back to, for a study session. And I'll talk about this under item five.
Discussion on, I don't want to have a discussion on items that we're bringing forth here, because this is not, this is not noticed. We're simply giving updates on our individual activities and brief reports. So just to make that clear, we're just going to be running into some noticing requirements if we start down that path. So with my report, I wanted to do a bit of a PSA, a public service announcement, and a thank you to our staff. We now have, particularly in the city clerk's office, we now have an omnibus packet for each of our council meetings. And so what I wanted to do was to share with the public how to obtain that packet online. The genesis of this, it's, it's been there for a while, but the genesis of things like super enumerating it, page one to the very end, so that we have a common basis, and also tabbing out with bookmarks so that it's very convenient and referenceable. That was actually something that I brought over from my service on BTA, because I had noticed that the Valley Transportation Authority was doing a lot of these things administratively. And it's good to kind of cross-reference and learn. So I want to thank our city clerk, Kirsten Swerche, as well as our assistant city clerk, Lauren Saputter, for putting this together over the course of time. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with regard to how to navigate to this. And so if you are at our city website, you would just go to our city, the tab on the right here, that the pointer is over, you would go to agendas and minutes. And here for our meeting here, city council agenda and minutes. And then this is where it gets a little bit tricky. What you have to do, so you'll see this is July 20th, you go to meeting details. And so that will open up another window, and that will give you the window for each of the items if you scroll down. However, what you really want is this right here, where it has the date and it says searchable packet. If you right-click on that, you can download the linked file. So assuming that you've downloaded it, and it's now in your, you know, downloaded folder or wherever you designate, you can then go to the file itself, and I'll share my screen here in terms of this file. And what you'll see is a very large file. This one's 596 pages for our current meeting. And the really, you know, I think in my mind, really like kind of perfected aspect of this, in this meeting, is the bookmarks. Because you could go to any one of the items. So for instance, we're on item number three, you see the agenda item. But if you wanted to go to, you know, jump to item number 20, for instance, the via shuttle contract amendment, you could click on that, and then scroll down, and then you would automatically get that. So this is, this is incredibly convenient, and something that I think would save a lot of time and give people great access over the course of, you know, when you're participating in our meetings. So I just wanted to spend this brief council report to let people know from the public how to, how to access that. So with that, I will go ahead and go to item number four. And once again, this is going to be the update from our interim city manager, Greg Larson, with regard to the various emergency responses from our recent and current ordeal of COVID-19, but other updates from the city manager as well. Welcome, Greg, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, deja vu. So I'll jump back into the COVID report. Just to summarize again, we are reporting 954 cases in our zip code and 965 cases by city. Both of those are 17 cases greater than what we reported to you in June. The good news is, in terms of vaccination, the lowest vaccinated area in Cupertino for those 12 years of age and older is 79%, and most of our city is up to 87 to 95%. The Delta variant, obviously, is the major topic in the news, and it remains on the rise both locally and nationally. For California, the Delta variant comprises 43% of all specimens sequenced in California, and the number's even higher nationally, for 58% of all new infections. The biggest news of the last week was Santa Clara County, our home county, and most counties of the Bay Area and Monterey Bay have recommended that the communities return to mask-wearing indoors. It's not a requirement at this time, but it is recommended by the health officer for Santa Clara County and our surrounding counties. Consequently, in the spirit of following the best medical advice available... Consequently, in the spirit of following the best medical advice available to us and to protect the health and safety of our patrons and our staff, we are moving to mandatory mask-wearing only in city facilities. We do not have authority to require it for external properties and businesses. That is up to the County Health Officer or a future emergency declaration by the city. But given we have now successfully partially reopened on a permit basis, we have found just since last Thursday, as we've started taking appointments at the permit center, that most of our clients were wearing masks anyway. And most of our staff that were upstairs in the public-serving area were wearing masks, and it just creates a greater level of comfort for all to have that be our practice in city facilities um until there's further direction from the County Health Officer. Um, again, I do want to reiterate, there is no change to state or CDC regulations. This is strictly the local uh County Health Officer recommendation that's applying throughout the county. We have gone through the process of changing our signage today to represent the new county recommendation and our new practice. We are looking for every opportunity to continue to remind the public that the best way to protect yourself, your family, and all those around you is to get vaccinated. Uh, Santa Clara County has their FreeVax site, which you can link to on the city website, where you can find a vaccination site near you for either your first vaccination or for a follow-up vaccination if required. However, there is no more testing in the city of Cupertino as the focus of our public health offices have moved to um vaccination. However, the Walgreens on Bolinger and El Camino Health on Valco Parkway do have testing available and appointments can be made at the county website once again. Last, I just wanted to close that the reopening, that started the partial reopening of our city that started last Thursday has been a success. I've been going through the lobby repeatedly every day and just seeing the response from our employees and our customers to be able to provide live support within the team and to the public in a safe and healthy way, which is paramount as we hopefully emerge as a community, a region, and a country from the horrific pandemic of the last 18 years. And Mayor, if I may just tack on, I look forward to a further discussion with the council on Thursday on kind of my work program for, on my performance targets for the time that I am serving you. So thank you very much. Pandemic will obviously be a large part of that discussion. So that concludes my report, Mayor, unless there's any questions from council.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Greg. Uh, greatly appreciated. And on your last point, uh, that will be in closed session. And I just wanted to dispel any uh kinds of speculation in the innuendo mill, which does exist uh and is quite often inaccurate. This, that would be closed session because it's about performance expectations at the beginning uh of your uh your stint as interim senior. Okay, uh, so Councilmember Way, did you have a question of?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. I have a quick question for um Intermanager Greg. So um if when we open our city facilities for meetings, uh, for example, the community room in Quinling, um like the end of August, will we, is that scheduled, still scheduled? And if we do, do we require, if we do, do we require every attendee to have temperature signing and, you know, do all the um procedures that we are doing right now?
Yes, we have been maintaining just, you know, since I've been with the city, the contact tracing requirements um so that if there is an identified breakout or transmission here at the city, we can respond to that. Um, per the prior reopening plan shared with the council, we did start the soft reopening uh July 15th. We are moving towards a more full reopening in August. We're keeping that date as mid-August as this point in time. But obviously, it's going to be subject to further guidance from our national, state, and county officials. And I think I will be reporting to council separately on that prior to your next meeting at the end of August as we see the medical advice at that time.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. I don't see any further hands raised, and so I'll move on to item number five. That is our report on committee assignments. And to follow up on a previous question asked under item number three by Councilmember Moore, uh, feel free to report out on subcommittee assignments here as well. Um, I'm just trying to do a quick time check on our expected time. And it seems like we're generally on track, uh, trying to keep your reports within a couple of minutes on your committee assignments. Um, council, are there any reports from our committee assignments ever since we last met, uh, which was June 15? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. And again, if Councilmember Willie would like to to give the report, you're more than welcome to chime in. Uh, so we we met a couple of times to discuss contracting and procurement. It does show up under Agenda Item 26 um as a, as a high-risk area. Uh, and we looked over our municipal code requirements uh for multi-year contracts, amending contracts, bidding requirements, contract maximums, state law, local jurisdictions' best practices, and our 2013 purchasing um policy. And we have some questions with regards to what our surrounding cities have for, for instance, for a city manager contract dollar amount authority, what they're allowed to to contract for, what their discretionary budget amount is. We have a little bit of information on that, but we'd like some more complete information. Um, and we did talk about economics, having an economic development survey uh where we would review local cities like Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Campbell, Santa Clara, and Palo Alto, and see how their economic development department is managed. Uh, do they have a commission or committee? And what kind of partnerships do they have with the uh community, like the Chamber of Commerce? And then, and we've touched upon this before uh with regards to our commissions um in our work plan to update the Economic Development Committee from ad hoc to standing with a charter. And I personally would like to see this come back as a study session where we have some discussion with all of this information from our surrounding cities to to see, are we in alignment with them? And then what we can do in order to improve what we have going forward? Because as you know, we have had an ad hoc committee since the the 70s. Um, and we need to fix that and really come up with what what we're intending to do, what our goals are. And John, please.
Okay, so thank you, Councilmember Moore. Uh, and Councilmember Moore, are you concluded with your subcommittee report outs?
There are report, we got into the weeds, so I I will not provide all of it. We intend to um meet again on Friday and and get some more information. Um, but when we get to item 26, we'll probably have some questions because it gets into procurement and contracts as a high-risk area.
I understand. So with regard to the rest of your subcommittee report outs, are you concluded with that? That's my question.
Um, I am, but I see that Councilmember Willie has his hand raised, so he may have something to add.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie.
Okay, um, Councilman Moore did a great job of summarizing the contract subcommittee. Um, I think we pretty much outlined our objectives, and now we're uh working on those, ultimately um being able to make recommendations to the City Council. Great, great summary. So I'll just switch over uh committee assignments uh for this recent period, vacations and holidays. But I'll go on to say that uh our power needs and climate concerns don't go on vacation. And as a result, there is a little bit to report. Silicon Valley Clean Energy just uh very recently entered into some more renewable power purchase agreements to the tune of another 800 megawatts of power. So I won't go into the details of that uh tonight. But again, you know, we're moving in the right direction. Silicon Valley Clean Energy is making good progress in getting us to use renewable power supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Uh, next we have Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So to follow up on the good work that Councilmember Willie reported on City of Clean Energy. As an alternate um for the commission, I attended the first meeting of the California Community Choice Financing Authority, which is a really good collaboration between Silicon Valley Clean Energy and other similar organizations to put their resources together. So um I agree with Councilmember Willie. Uh, City on Valley Clean Energy is really working very hard and on the right direction.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So um we didn't have a committee the past few weeks. However, we will have a legislative review committee coming up this Friday, an audit committee meeting next Monday. And then on August 2nd, we have a housing subcommittee meeting. So I'd like to welcome people to attend on the legislative review committee. We will be talking about a potential town hall to inform the residents about the legislative process. And maybe give a briefing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, so I've had a number of meetings related to VTA ever since June 15, and those are related to a slew of items. Um, there was the horrific tragedy of the shooting um in um the the corporation yard related to the rail. And um, you know, we've had a number of follow-up debriefings and meetings about that. This past Sunday, um, you know, both the PAC Chair, Councilmember Moore, which is the Policy Advisory Committee, uh, and myself, uh, who represents the five cities to VTA as a board member there, attended an event at the SAP Center honoring and remembering uh the nine who perished at the hands of uh their fellow employee at the the VTA yard. We've also, uh, prior to that, had an event with regard to ransom for uh hacking. And so there was a follow-up with regard to trying to figure out the um the IT bidding process for making sure that that is appropriately bid out. And we had a regular meeting there as well. Um, we have had some significant um updates to our volunteer emergency services since June 15. Uh, our block leader program is being folded into uh the volunteer uh emergency services, AEGIS. And so with the recent retirement of our staffer who staffed the block leader program, we now have an opportunity to uh bring all of volunteers under a a single organizational structure, which I think worked out really well. So uh there was a cares meeting having to do with the radio emergency system uh that both Councilmember Moore and I attended. Uh, that's uh kind of unusual to do that over Zoom, but it was possible to do it. And then subsequent to that, uh, last week, we had a meeting of the uh block leaders in which it was the first meeting under this um United Construction uh combined with um the Emergency Services Program, which is very capably um led by our employee staffer, Tom Chin, as well as Ken Erickson. I think that was it on the committee assignments. Uh, ABAG had its General Assembly meeting on June 25th, uh, and I attended on behalf of Cupertino. So um I don't see any other um hands raised with regard to our committee assignments. Uh, I think we've all spoken on the committee assignments. So I'll go ahead and move us on to item number six uh through uh the rest of our consent calendar. Uh, would anyone like to pull any items from consent? I do have a communication from the public to pull item number 20. Peggy Griffin uh emailed to request that, uh, and that relates to the the Via Shuttle program that we have. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. Would you like to pull any items from our consent calendar? Uh, and now I see your hand is lowered. Are there any other council members, Councilmember Way, did you want to pull any other items?
Yes, I have a minor edit on item number 12 on the minutes. So um I think we should quote it and just have a clean copy next time. Is that how the process goes?
Um, that sounds good. We'll pull it, and you'll be able to discuss uh your your edit, and then we'll provide direction.
And I, Mayor, I believe that's actually item number six that Councilmember Way is referring to the June.
Yes, number, yes, number six, yeah, sorry.
And I did submit a redline version um with those corrections, and and I'll bring back a clean copy at the next, the subsequent uh meeting in August.
Okay. Um, okay, so I'll ask our members of the public, if you have any items between uh six and 20, with the item six and 20 already pulled, uh, please raise your hand at this point. I don't see any members of the public. Uh, and so would anyone from council like to move items seven through 19 on our consent calendar? Councilmember Willie.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and move items seven through 19.
Would anyone like to second, Councilmember Way?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, any care for further discussion on this item to move items seven through 19 on our consent calendar? Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct our roll call vote.
Councilmember uh Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item six, as I mentioned, is our draft June 1st, 2021 minutes. And so um, Councilmember Way, would you like to describe your uh your edit that you would like to make?
Right, it's item number six, but not uh on item number 12. Um, the um, the council members requesting not to have, because that was my request, not to have a gender reveal on Thursdays, so just add not to have.
Okay, just to make it from have to not to have, correct?
That's correct, yes. Thank you.
Okay, and so um you were suggesting that we have a clean copy in our next council meeting? And so would you like to uh move that? Or would you like to just go ahead and make that correction and uh move the minutes with the correction?
I think I I would just uh make the correction and move for to approve it right now.
Okay, great. Would anyone like to second my motion?
Paul second.
Okay, great. Councilmember Way moves, and Councilmember Willie seconds uh the the motion um is to approve the June 1st council minutes with the correction from Councilmember Way. I don't see any other hands raised or comment. I don't see any hands raised from the public. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 20 on the consent calendar that's been pulled is the consideration of approval of a contract amendment with no man transit, uh, which is VIA to extend the VIA Cupertino Shuttle Pilot Program by extending the contract time. Second, to update the contract language due to California Assembly Bill 5 and Proposition 22. And three, to increase driver compensation. And so I see that a couple of members of our public works staff have their cameras on. Um, Mr. City Manager Greg Larson, with your leave, I'd like to introduce Director Public Works Roger Lee, as well as Chris Correa, our Senior Transportation Manager. And so, welcome.
Absolutely, Mr. Mr. Mayor. We can either move straight to a staff presentation, or you could hear the public question, and we address it there. It's your discretion. If you'd like a presentation, then it's Mr. Lee and Mr. Carr.
And that's an excellent suggestion. And so let me see if I can get some guidance from um the email. And so Peggy Griffin, you have your hand raised, so let's just go straight to you with regards to comments as to um your request to pull the agenda item number 20. Welcome.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers and staff. Um, my concern was that the heat map didn't provide all the information. Two of the key drop-off pickup spots were the Sunnyvale Caltrain Station and the Kaiser Hospital. And there was discussion of whether or not, you know, the Mountain View Caltrain was gonna eventually go on. And so I wanted to see the number, the heat spot for those two locations relative to the rest of the locations in Cupertino. Thank you.
All right, let's uh bring it up to the staff. And um let's go ahead and um i- if you can make an abbreviated staff report here uh or presentation based upon uh this inquiry from the public.
Absolutely, Mayor. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. I'll just introduce Chris Correa, our Senior Transportation Planner. Chris.
Uh, thank you, Roger. Um, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, why don't I start by answering the member of the public's question, uh, which was regarding the heat map? Um, and I do apologize that map. And I do apologize, that map did sort of cut off Sunnyvale and Kaiser Santa Clara. I can say, though, that the Sunnyvale Caltrain Station was by far the most popular destination and pickup spot. So that is, if it were in the heat map, it would have a larger graphic around it than any of the other locations. And Kaiser as well was a very popular destination. I'll go ahead and do a quick presentation, just to kind of go over the main points with the contract amendment. This contract extends the Via pilot to October 31st.
Chris, pardon me. Is that the pleasure of the mayor, or have we answered the resident's question?
Yeah, no, I think that, well, Chris, did you have a time estimate for this presentation?
I can make it two and a half minutes.
Okay, yeah, I think we can grant the leave for that.
Okay. The main points of the contract extension are to extend the length of the pilot to make up for the period where it paused during COVID. A small increase in driver pay due to the nationwide worker shortage. And then changes to the language to update the contract in light of AB 5 and Prop 22, which has to do with using contractors as drivers. The relaunch is planned for September 1st. And then this slide, you can just see that our ridership before COVID was very strong. We hit 4,000 monthly trip average in February before the shelter-in-place orders, which outpaces nearly every other VIA deployment in the country that early in a pilot. So that's really promising for the future of the pilot. And this is the heat map that shows the most popular pickup destination point. That's really it. That concludes the presentation.
Great, thanks very much, Chris. And we'll go ahead and bring this to council. We have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. And so we'll take questions at this point, and then go to our members of the public following our questions. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. Chris, I was just wondering if you had a timeframe for that heat map? Because it was showing Danza College, and they kind of shut down, so I was wondering about that first.
Yes, the timeframe was from the launch of the pilot in October 2019 through the shelter-in-place orders in March 12, I think, 2020.
Okay, great. And then I'm hoping that the city, as we move forward, because some of our surrounding cities are trying to launch their own shuttle systems, that we're going to do some coordination with them. And I'm hoping you're, you know, reaching out so that we aren't having the duplication of resources from each city. And then we need to see what our surrounding cities are trying to do with regards to the bureaucracy aspect, and if we can share some resources and maybe make it cheaper for us in the long term, or see if VTA is going to try to get involved and provide some kind of a shuttle network. Have you heard anything about that? And that maybe Roger from the VTA TAC has some information for whether or not they're intending to get into that market.
I'll let Roger speak to his part of your question. I can say I have reached out to Sunnyvale and also San Jose regarding West San Jose. And there is interest in our surrounding communities in either partnering with us or perhaps going in on a grant application together to expand the area. So that's definitely top of mind for us. I don't know if VTA, though, is pursuing this. Maybe Roger could chime in.
Yeah, I thank you for the question, Councilmember Moore. I recall there was a grant, and there was maybe four other agencies that had applied that had similar programs to VIA. And I know one was Palo Alto, just escaping what the other ones were. I don't feel that either of them were as effective as ours. But I'm not aware of any that VTA is promoting similar to us.
Okay. I'm also wondering if we could have an updated heat map, which will show the out-of-map areas that you're referring to, so that we can see that. And if you can, I see there's the different sizes of the circles. If we could have some sort of a sense, like a legend there, that would help. And I don't think it's going to, it's not going to change my view on this. I think it's doing really great, and the 4,000 monthly trips is pretty tremendous. So I'm pretty excited about this, and I'm glad that people are wanting to ride, and that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Moore. And so let's go ahead and ask our local VTA board member representing five cities, including Cupertino, with regard to following up on your question. Is VTA working on a ride-sharing program similar to VIA? The answer is, well, they're essentially working through us to this grant program, and there is interest from our adjoining cities. I did have a breakfast with Vice Mayor Jones of San Jose, and he has his district in West San Jose. And so there are certainly adjoining jurisdictions that seem to have an appetite for this kind of idea, especially in our area of the county. So it's something that I would like to keep pushing forward. I was, you know, transitioning over onto the VTA Board at the beginning of this calendar year when the deadlines had elapsed for applying for this grant funding. And I think that ultimately that becomes a lesson learned. I mean, we were an innovation leader, so to speak, in this area on trying to get this type of, you know, mechanism in our city, with perhaps the exception of the RIDE program, which was basically sponsored by the county and championed by Supervisor Semenian. So that did get a good amount of the grant funding. I tried to get the remaining grant funding. We had actually missed the deadline. And so there was some miscommunication there between our agency as well as VTA in terms of that. But I'm really pleased to be able to see that this is coming back to us, because there are point-to-point needs. RIDE perhaps was more effectively politically packaged, but I think VIA has more potential to reach the entirety of the community. And so if you look at the needs there, certainly between the Apple campuses and the Sunnyvale Caltrain Station, that's heavy usage. And so Peggy Griffin is absolutely right to go ahead and point out, hey, let's look at the heat map there. You've got not just Kaiser, you've got a communal hospital, you've got other points that people often go to. But, you know, it would be really good to see these heat maps develop over time, because then we're going to be able to see more effectively where our transit needs are in this area of the county, in the West Valley region as well as North Valley. So hopefully we can, you know, start something without being, you know, at loggerheads or anything like that with regard to what the other transit needs of the county happen to be. So I'm happy to, you know, represent Cupertino and Campbell and Saratoga, Los Gatos, as well as Monasterino on the VTA Board. And I'll be, you know, continually working to, you know, represent and champion those needs of West Valley in terms of getting us from place to place. So I don't see any other hands raised at this point. Councilmember Moore, you do have your hand raised still. Did you want to follow up on a point?
Yes, that's actually pretty exciting that you've got that interconnection, because I could see, you know, individuals from Saratoga wanting to get to either Kaiser or to Pamp, Mountain View, or out, you know, to Caltrain. I am kind of curious, because we have the TDM, we have the shuttle system from Apple headquarters. And if this heat map is indicating that we are, and maybe this is the question, are we showing that we are having Apple employees from the headquarters utilizing the shuttle in order to get to Caltrain? Is that something that you noticed?
Yes, Councilmember, that is a trend that we saw. We saw a significant amount of trips between Sunnyvale Caltrain and the Apple campus.
Okay, and these are subsidized trips?
No, these were paid trips. Subsidized in the sense that VIA is subsidized by the city, you could say.
Okay, okay. I just want to know what our partnership is looking like with moving the Apple employees. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, that's an absolutely fair point. I mean, if we can have a sit-down discussion, and we have the data, then it makes sense to do the outreach once this has matured a bit. Councilmember Way?
Yeah, just kind of prompted by one of those previous comments. So if someone in Saratoga wanted to get to the Caltrain station, are they able to call VIA? Or does one of the destinations or destination or origin have to be in Cupertino?
So to use VIA, you have to be within Cupertino, or the Sunnyvale Caltrain Station, or, yeah, just those two places. It's similar to Bike Share. There's a geographic boundary, and you have to be within it to use the service.
Now, you know, expanding on that just a tad, if somebody in Saratoga wanted to get to Caltrain, could they, could they take advantage of VIA where they paid the full fare? So that no portion was being subsidized by Cupertino?
I've spoken with VIA about something that I think getting at what you're, that gets to what you're asking. There is a possibility where we could create sort of fair rings that expands in cost as you get further away from Cupertino. And they're willing to look at that with us. It would put a little bit more of a financial burden on Cupertino, unless we're very careful how we create that, because it could pull some of our drivers away from our core service area. So that's the one thing we would have to be careful about. But it is a possibility.
It seems like that would be a real segue into working with the other community. If Saratoga was seeing, you know, a number of their residents using VIA, then there is a, well, there's a potential for them to say, okay, let's go ahead and work in conjunction, ultimately adding more vehicles, because now we're adding more ridership. But I think that would still be hugely more energy-efficient and economically efficient than having a VIA in Saratoga and a VIA in Cupertino. So, yeah, if you're talking to VIA about that, I would think that would be a real good possibility. So thanks.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Way. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and move the recommended action, which I'd read at the beginning, so I won't read that again. I will add to that a request that VIA come back. I think it's very interesting what they're doing from a technological basis. So during the interim, when, you know, we were in the midst of the pandemic, and we had suspended the service, I had read some articles and online information about some of the really innovative stuff that VIA is engaging in. So I think it would be great to get a representative from there once we get this started back up again, assuming that this motion passes, to let us know. Because it also makes us more competitive for future grant funding as well. And I wanted to add to that motion something that Councilmember Moore had stated, but I apologize for this. I don't remember what it was precisely. Could you remind me, there was something that you wanted to follow up? Oh, I'm sorry, this is having to do with the resident. This should be Peggy Griffin's request to make sure that the heat map, so to speak, is placed somewhere in the public domain. And so if it's a matter of adding it to the materials for this or on our VIA page on our city website, please do, you know, include that. Because I think the heat map is clearly expansion, you know, to the point that it's useful, right? The comments from council have been, I think, very encouraging. But if our residents and residents of adjoining jurisdictions also want to, you know, kind of interoperate and be able to go to various places, you know, from our collective in Sunnyvale, to San Jose, to Saratoga, et cetera, then it seems like this is a great talking point in the transit equation. And of course, it's going to be about, you know, dollars and those types of things. But I think as we accumulate, you know, more partners, it would be inevitably more convenient.
Mayor Paul, I can go ahead and post the updated map next week and ridership statistics to our shuttle webpage, which is Cupertino.org/shuttle. And then it'll be available for the public.
And remind everyone, I know this is in the materials, but what is the contemplated startup date again?
December 1st, December 1st, 2021.
That's right, December 1st. Okay, great. So we would wait August, and then, you know, a brief month and a half from now, we would be able to get the, you know, community shuttle service back. So, Councilmember Moore, did you have a final thought before we? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to second the motion that I put forward?
Okay, I believe so. I just want to make sure that we will get some information back on the service rings, because I was thinking, you know, Saratoga, maybe if they were hesitant for having a shuttle, if they could partner with Cupertino, and we were doing the service ring model, it could be something that is feasible for them. And if there's some grant money next year from VTA, that that could be something really intriguing. So if that is included, the service ring aspect, Mayor Paul, could you please clarify?
Yeah, you know, let me, well, let's have that be put forward to staff at this point. But also, the city manager and I are in a meeting next week with the other West Valley managers and mayors. And we can put that forward near the end of that meeting just to ask my mayoral counterparts in the other four cities in West Valley whether they would be interested in collaborating. And then, of course, you know, you're the Chair of the Policy Advisory Committee for VTA. And so you can certainly, you know, approach that in terms of your next meeting there. So I would really like to have us reset the, you know, clock and make sure that we approach this in a really collaborative fashion. I mean, I think when we first started VIA, it was very positively received. I was the Vice Chair of the PAC last year. And just overall, I think if we just kind of focus on it and have a cohesive effort, this can turn into something that's really quite valuable. We don't necessarily need to go and say, hey, you know, these various types of lines aren't working so well. Because, you know, for my part, I think the agency, our transit agency and transportation agency, because they, you know, work on congestion relief in the county as well. I think they do a lot of things that are, you know, very good and, you know, fungible as good practices for our jurisdiction as we've seen. So, yeah, I'd like to kind of turn the corner there and make it more of a collaborative effort. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
So this is something I asked Greg, but then maybe the public should know that. I think this, I asked about promotional efforts. If we are relaunching it, we should make sure that residents know when it's coming, and the teenagers 40 years older can take it to school. So could we describe the effort that we will put into relaunching it? And the second thing is, because the COVID variant is coming back. I think in the beginning of COVID, there was a procedure of safety procedure in cleaning up the vehicle. So what would be the procedures in terms of that? But this standard is changing, so.
Good questions. So did anyone, Greg or Chris, did you want to tap into those?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we can certainly get an informational memo out to council. And per discussion with you, we can determine if possibly a brief introductory program at your August meeting might be appropriate leading in just a couple of weeks later to the launch of the program, so.
Yeah, we can definitely talk about how we PR this, you know. Certainly a press release would be in order. That would be relatively low.
Sorry, and we had discount the first time, so would the discount still be applicable? Do we have a new discount?
We, to just quickly want to let you know that we do have a pretty robust communications plan with our communications officer. And our communications team will be doing an article on the theme, and a pretty robust social media outreach. And VIA does have planned outreach to the business community and also the community at large. And they have the data from the previous riders, so that they can use that to really let everyone know that it's restarting that already rode and try to expand the pool of people riding. That's their goal and our goal. And to answer the second part of your question, the COVID protocols will still be in place. Cleaning masks will be recommended. And in the contract, we're asking that VIA follow any county-wide guidance. And then finally, the fares are increasing by a quarter. So the flat fare will now be $4 instead of $3.75. And the discounted fares, which are 50% off, will now be $2. So a little easier to message, $4, $2. But they will still all be in place.
Well, I think Vice Mayor Chow makes a good point with regard to, you know, Well, I think Vice Mayor Chow makes a good point with regard to, um, you know, COVID protocols. It is a form of public transit, so, you know, it, it is, uh, probably a requirement, right, that people, uh, wear masks. Um, you know, uh, one of the questions that she had asked, uh, or one of the points that she had raised had to do with students taking VIA to school. And I remember that a while back, that had been perhaps a bit of an issue. Is that something that was practical during our first run on this? Because I know that there's, there's a window of time, right? And in which people can be picked up and a window of time in which they can be dropped off. The, the, does the, you know, structure of this allow this to be used as a kind of a transit to, to school type of, um?
Interestingly, interestingly, the, the area near Manavista had a very high ridership, but especially more so in the afternoon than in the morning. I think that with school and sports activities, um, more students were using it in the afternoons that were kind of just going to other parts of Cupertino kind of to explore. But not so much in the morning crush, but we did see a lot in the afternoon, a lot of ridership.
I mean, the parents are probably a little bit easier dropping off in the morning than, you know, mid-afternoon they might be.
Yeah.
Um, okay, great. You know, um, I know we have a motion on the table on a second from, uh, Councilmember Moore. Uh, but let me go ahead, because we didn't have any hands raised from the public, uh, before. Let me go ahead to our hand raised from Vijay thirty-four. And so did you want to speak on this particular item, number twenty?
Uh, yes, ready to speak.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, uh, what I had to say was that, uh, uh, just give me a minute. Uh, uh, Charlene Lee, former Cupertino City Council candidate, two thousand twenty house at eight eighty-eight Candlewood Drive, was intruded by police officer Jeffrey Reel, badge twenty-four six. Jeffrey Reel did not tell Charlene what's happening when he intru-
You know, um, uh, thank you for stopping. If this is not related to item twenty, which is the VIA shuttle, um, I'm going to have to ask you to, uh, cease your comment. Uh, we've had the opportunity for oral communications. Uh, did you want to speak to the VIA shuttle item at all? Okay, I'm going to take it that, um, it was a different topic. And so let's go on to, um, the item. There is a motion on item twenty in a second. I don't see any other hands raised from our council. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thanks very much. Our next item is item twenty-one. This is under second reading of ordinances. The subject is to consider an act on ordinance number two one dash two 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 eight in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code section eleven dot two seven dot one forty-five. Uh, it has to do with, uh, designation of preferential parking zones in a neighborhood that's near Rancho San Antonio. Do we have a staff report for this item? Um, otherwise, um, we can go ahead and, uh, take any questions from city council. Uh, I don't see hands raised from council or, or from the public. Um, but, uh, Mr. City Manager, Greg, would you like to, uh, words on?
Consistent, uh, second hearing, we weren't signing a presentation, but David Stillman is available to answer any questions from council or staff. Or council or public, excuse me.
Great. Thanks, Greg. Welcome, David. Um, I still don't see hands raised from, um, either the public or council. Uh, now, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised if you want to, uh, ask any, uh, questions with regard to this side.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up, I, I totally understand why this, this neighborhood is looking for this, this ordinance. Uh, there was comment, uh, at the last, uh, the first reading about people being lined up at, at Rancho. And I actually did go there around five fifteen and I was in a line, which really surprised me because it was still dark and, uh, it was shocking. And then the parking is now backed all the way to, um, on Cristo Rey Drive, all the way to, to Foothill. And I was really surprised at that. It's super popular. And I, and I certainly feel for this neighborhood, uh, and understand why this ordinance is here. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm going to go ahead and ask someone to bring forward a motion, an omnibus motion, to conduct the second reading and that the city clerk's reading constitute the, uh, second reading thereof and also to enact, uh, ordinance number two one dash two 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 eight. Um, Councilmember Moore, did you want to make that motion?
Um, sure. Um, I move that ordinance number two one dash two 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 eight be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof. And I move that ordinance number two one dash two 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 eight be enacted.
Very good. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? Councilmember Wei?
I'll second that.
Great. Um, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the second reading of this ordinance?
This is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash two 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 eight in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code chapter one one point two seven point one four five, designation of preferential parking zones to add Sarah Street, all Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays from six AM to two PM.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I don't see any other hands raised at this point. We have a motion and the second on the table. Would you please conduct a roll call vote in that motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Uh, the motion, uh, enacts the ordinance as well. And so, um, we'll go on to item number twenty-two. Uh, this is under public hearings and it's, uh, weed abatement. The subject is a hearing to approve lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from the abatement of public nuisance, which is weed, xander, brush for the annual weeding and brush abatement programs. So, um, Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce our speaker or, uh, Madam City Clerk? Did you want to, I guess you're sharing your screen for the presentation.
I believe we'll have a brief presentation, Mr. Mayor, given there was one member of the public who started to speak under oral communications. And that would be from our Madam City Clerk and our county representative. Madam Clerk?
Yep, very good.
Yes, sorry, I jumped the gun a little bit, um, but, uh, I, here is my presentation. So, um, the lien assessment and collection process includes both the weed and brush abatement programs. The programs are in place to work with property owners to ensure the removal of brush, dry weeds, and dead vegetation before the start of the fire season. Uh, this is more officially called nuisance abatement. Only properties that have not met the requirements of the two programs are listed in the assessment report. And for this season, uh, the brush, um, the brush program, there are no parcels on the brush program in this, uh, this assessment report.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Sorry, just, just a few more slides, Mayor. Um, the assessment list is a report provided by the county that includes, uh, all county costs that are associated with the abatement, um, on the properties listed. Charges include any work performed by the county assigned contractor as well as any administrative fees. Council confirmation is required and if approved, the total charges included on the property owner tax state will, are included on the property owner tax statement as a special assessment. Um, so these are the twenty twenty-one season county fees. Every property in the weed abatement program receives an initial inspection by the county after April thirty to determine if the weeds have been properly abated. The county's inspection fee for the twenty twenty-one season is eighty-four dollars. The administrative fees are for failed inspection and/or contract work necessary to abate. Um, also, one hundred percent of the contract invoice is transferred to the property owner for payment. Um, I just want to note on November twenty-second, um, on November second, twenty twenty, the council modified the weed abatement program process. So the city will pay the initial inspection cost of eighty-four dollars if a property passes the initial inspection by the April thirty deadline. And the city council approved a budget appropriation to cover these costs and these costs are funded by the general fund. The county filed an initial assessment report of all costs associated with the abatement of weeds, which was, uh, the report that was mailed to property owners along with the hearing notice on June sixth. Um, the county then filed a, uh, subsequently filed a report of properties that passed the initial inspection along with a revised assessment report of only those properties that did not pass inspection. So the initial report, it was essentially split into these two groups, pass and not pass. This year, ninety-four properties were found to be compliant as listed in the past inspection report. Accordingly, this inspection co- cost will be paid by the city and those properties have been removed from the revised assessment report and are not included for consideration by council at this meeting. Um, there are thirty-one parcels on the revised assessment list. This hearing will consider approval of a lien assessment and collection of fees on those properties that did not pass inspection, the initial inspection, and thus incurred costs for the county to abate, um, the nuisance. So your action this evening is to consider any objections from, um, property owners listed on the revised assessment report. And if council wishes, adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero six eight approving those, uh, lien assessments. And that includes, concludes my presentation. Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program Manager, Mo Cumery, is available for questions, um, that you may have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mo, welcome. Um, and council, are there any questions of either the city clerk or, or county representative before we open the hearing and take public commentary? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will go ahead and open the hearing. Um, I don't see any public, uh, hands up. If you would like to speak on this item, again, this is item number twenty-two with regard to, uh, weed abatement, please raise your hand. I note that there was one person, um, that did have her hand raised in oral communications that wanted to speak on this. Um, and to remind, I believe that was caller five one seven two. I do have one hand raised at this point from, uh, Wan Ling Wen. Uh, and so I will call on, uh, Wan Ling Wen. And I will remind the public that you will need to have your hand raised by the time that the first person is done speaking in order to be called on. Um, we'll be consistent in applying that requirement. And so, welcome, Wan.
Hi.
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 Hi. Uh, I just, uh, wondering, um, uh, we already, uh, after last year, the pandemic started, we already, uh, make, maintain, uh, maintenance of the weed and, uh, gases. Uh, just wondering if, uh, we can be removed from the program. Uh, the address is one zero two five one South Tantao Avenue. And yeah, and we are not sure if, like, uh, what's the result of this year's inspection? Like, why am I still getting a letter from you? And I would like some qualifications.
Okay, thank you, Wan Ling. Um, I believe that, um, we have our county representative here. Mo, did you want to speak to that? Um, it's, I believe the address is one zero two five one South Tantao. Um, but the question was, after a, a year, why is the property still on the list? Uh, did you want to speak to that question or other comment?
Um, oh, there it is.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Uh, it took me a minute to get logged in. I got three computers going here. Uh, the way the program works is that if a property is placed on the program for noncompliance, it remains on until it has three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. Uh, I would, uh, need, I don't normally look up a property based on the address. So I, I'm looking here to see.
I, Mo, I do have the, um, I did happen to pull up the past, the properties that did pass inspection list and the one zero two five one Tantao Avenue is on that list. Um, so uh, with the new city process that the city would cover that eighty-four dollar cost, I can share my-
Do you know what the, uh, the APN number was?
Yes, it is APN three seven five zero eight zero zero four.
We do a quick, I could do a quick check and tell you how long they have before they would be removed.
Sure.
They were added in twenty twenty, so technically they've only had one year of compliance. They would require two more years of voluntary compliance before the property would come off the program.
And if they're complying, then both of the years the city will cover, uh, based upon our new practice, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, hopefully that addresses, um, the public speaker's item. Um, I don't see any other public speakers based upon the echo. Um, I, you know, speculate that that might have been the same person as the caller, um, from the phone number. And so I will bring this back up to council. Um, I see that Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Councilmember Moore, did you want to, um, now that we've closed the hearing, uh, did you want to, uh, move the default? And I will read this, uh, so there will be no need to make the motion again.
Uh, I actually have a clarifying question.
Okay, well, why don't we, um, take your clarifying question now before we put forward the motion?
Okay, so just to be clear, um, it's a question of staff. When I look at the draft resolution, what is this a listing of, um, these properties? So there's one page, exhibit A one in the resolution. And when I look up that South Tantao Avenue address, I don't see it in this list. So what exactly is this, uh, you know, to simplify what this resolution is, is regarding?
Sure, Councilmember Moore, I can answer that. So the resolution is listing the thirty-one parcels that did not pass their initial inspection and, um, thus incurred costs by the count, uh, for the county to abate the nuisance. Um, the reason that, um, the Tantao Avenue, um, parcel was not listed is because it, it was part of the other, um, past inspection, um, list. And so, um, the county is not requesting to recoup costs. Well, they are requesting recoup costs for, for that list, but the, the city will cover that cost. Um, so, so it's just for those, um, thirty-one parcels that, that didn't pass their inspection. Maybe Mo can perhaps explain it a little more clearly.
So are these new properties that didn't pass the inspection? Did that, did it happen recently or, or what?
Well, many of the properties that you see, uh, in the list you have are recurring properties. They failed over and over again. Some of them are new, some of them are not. What happened is, uh, over the years, the, the city has made the decision that for properties where the property owners are be, are, are making the effort and they're being compliant, the city would cover the cost for property owners who are making that effort and they're taking care of the issue, uh, prior to our inspection. However, because we are a cost recovery program, we have to recover all of our costs. We have to charge for the initial inspection.
No, that, that's enough. Thank, I, I follow. Okay, so thank you, Mo. And to answer, uh, Mayor Paul's question, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-one dash oh six eight approving the lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels for the annual weed and brush abatement programs to allow the county to recover the cost of abatement.
Great, thank you. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
I'll second that, please.
Excellent. Um, and just as a quick follow-up, I, I, I do note that, um, attachment C to the staff report, uh, does have the, uh, the property listed. That's a super enumerated page, number two hundred and seventy-six in the omnibus file packet, um, that I was indicating. So, so the, so the information is out there in our, um, item here. Uh, so I don't see any other hands raised at this point. And so I'm going to go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now we are on to item number twenty-three on our agenda. That is a consideration of lease sale or city operation of the Cupertino municipal water system and provision of direction on these options. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the presentation?
I, uh, won't add any comments except to introduce our Public Works Director, Roger Lee, who has other staff as well as legal counsel with us for any questions the council and public may have. Uh, given the importance of the issue, we do have a brief presentation. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I am trying to get my video to show and I'm having some challenges here, so pardon me.
Well, we do have your slides.
Okay, no, here I am. Thank you. No, I want you to see me for sure. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Paul and, uh, uh, council members. The topic of this public hearing is the- The topic of this public hearing is the is the consideration of sale, lease, or city operation of the Cupertino municipal water system. I'm Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Joining me for any questions that may be, may come up related to the public utility code that is applicable to our water system is Alexandra Barnhill. Alexandra has been our legal counsel assisting with the current lease of the water system, and she's with the firm of Jarvis, Fay, and Gibson. Starting this presentation off with this water service area map. As you can see on this map, the city is roughly divided into three service areas that include areas owned and operated by California Water Service Company, which is the area in green, top right. An area owned and operated by San Jose Water Company, which is orange, more to the bottom right. And an area owned by the city and leased to San Jose Water Company in blue, so the top left. Is this blue area that is the focus of this agenda item. This system includes approximately forty-five hundred connections, sixty miles of water mains, a connection to potable water from Valley Water, two wells, three storage tanks, and a pumping station. Prior to nineteen ninety-seven, the system was operated by the city. And of interesting note is that a small percentage of the system dates to the early nineteen hundreds and is certainly part of Cupertino's history. The next slide gives a timeline of current twenty-five-year lease that began in nineteen ninety-seven. And so since that year, San Jose Water Company has been responsible for all operations of the system, including the repair, maintenance, operation, customer service billing, emergency service, and water quality testing. Per the terms of that agreement, the city received an upfront payment of six-point-eight million dollars concession fee and an annual payment of a dollar per year from San Jose Water Company. On December of twenty nineteen, council approved an amended and restated lease. This new lease agreement required San Jose Water Company to deposit five million of funds to the city for the purpose of completing capital improvements to the system before the end of the lease term. These funds were received by the city and improvements are ongoing today. The purpose of this agenda item this evening is to consider the ongoing future operations of the water system after the current lease expires in September of twenty-two. And these operations are as follows. And they're shown on this slide. They include sale, city operation, and a new extended long-term lease. And the various details of applicable process, timelines to complete, and potential advantages and disadvantages of each of these options will be discussed. And we'll begin with this next slide. So these are two options for the sale of the system. In this first option, staff would engage in a request for proposal process. Once staff has negotiated sale terms with the proposed purchaser, council would consider and determine which proposer is best qualified to continue to provide equal or better services to the customers of the water system. Approval of the proposed sale would then require several additional steps, including a majority vote of all voters in the city that were outlined in the staff report. If a sale was approved by majority vote and by the city council, the California Public Utilities Commission, which I'll refer to CPUC going forward, would then review the terms and potentially require the city and the proposer to renegotiate if the CPUC determined the terms were improper. This process, including negotiations and CPUC review, is estimated to take up to forty-one months and would require the current lease to have a short-term extension to bridge that gap of time between the October twenty-two expiration date and the sale. For the second option, there is a simplified process to sell the system to a bordering water system without voter approval.
Oh, I do.
We've got an open mic somewhere. Thank you. I'll back up a little bit. So for the second option, there is a simplified process to sell the system to a bordering water system without voter approval. But this would involve a legislative amendment. Current legislation that allows a simplified process is limited to the only, only three cities and would require amendment to include Cupertino. And this process is further described in the staff report. And I am not detailing in this presentation unless it would request. The second option, including negotiations and CPUC review, is estimated to take up to forty-five months. And similar to the first option, would require the current lease to have a short-term extension. Now, neither of these options to sell the water system is recommended because the sale is contingent upon both public and CPUC approval, and a benefit to the customers is not clear. Additionally, sale would be a time-consuming process with potentially uncertain results. While the city could receive a one-time payment for the system's assets, it would lose the ability to influence this asset in the future. Staff believes that its efforts would be better spent on ensuring the system is properly maintained and that rates not exceed those authorized by the CPUC rather than on administrative tasks such as seeking legislative amendments or preparing for an election. So the second option for consideration is the city operating the system using its own forces. Taking over operation of the system would transfer all risks and all costs for operation of the system to the city, including the cost of maintenance, and could result in increased costs to customers. Due to the small size of the system, the city would not be able to take advantage of the economies of scale that the private purveyors have serving over one million customers. This would likely result in an increase in rates to the customers. Additionally, city operation of the system would require specialized staffing to meet and comply with state requirements. For analysis complete in early twenty nineteen, a minimum of nine FTE full-time equivalent staffing would be required to staff the system and in excess of three hundred thousand annually for contract services and funding of certificate resources for operating and capital costs. Due to these ongoing costs and the likely higher customer rates to support these expenses, this option is not being recommended. If this option is considered, up to thirty-six months will be required as well as short-term extension of the current lease agreement. This time is needed to recruit and hire additional staffing, investigate, and find a location, the housing, staff, and equipment, and obtain the necessary regulatory approvals. So the third option on this slide, and the last option for your consideration, is a new long-term lease. Unlike a sale of the system, this process for leasing the water system is simpler and less time-consuming. It also allows for a level of expertise in operations and economies of scale that cannot be achieved if the city were to operate the system itself. Leasing the system has the advantage of allowing the city to continue to own a valuable asset and to receive a return on the investment the public made in creating the system. In completing the new lease, staff would include provisions like what is in the current amended lease that would require customers receive comparable services and rates as that provided to other Cupertino residents served by San Jose Water Company or Cal Waters privately-owned systems. Staff is recommending this option. The next slide covers at a high level the proposed terms, what a new long-term lease would include. With the amended lease negotiations that culminated in twenty eighteen, and many of council were there for those, for that event, staff was a good, staff has a good starting point for a new long-term lease and understand what has worked well and not well with the current lease. Accordingly, staff will include in the new lease a term of twenty years, that a specified amount of dollars be allocated for system improvements. And as previously stated, that rates have a ceiling that are equal or less than surrounding systems. Additionally, lease provisions will be updated to current best practices for operation and maintenance to ensure that system customers receive quality and reliable water service. Upon completion of the new lease agreement, the request for proposals would be publicly advertised. Received proposals would be evaluated by staff, and proposals determined to be, again, best qualified to continue to provide equal or better service to the customers of the system would be presented for council award consideration at a public hearing. At this hearing, council would be presented a summary of proposals received that would include at a minimum the information that's presented on this slide. If the council directs staff to pursue a new lease, it will be necessary to start soon and allow staff to work efficiently to ensure completion by the October twenty-two expiration date of the current lease. And the next steps are on this following slide, this timetable. And this was, this is the same table that was on pages four and five in the staff report. And as you can see from this slide, there's a little time to spare to complete this effort if authorized by council. So this is the last slide and concludes my presentation. And I'll look forward to all input questions and directions, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger Lee. Let's go ahead and council ask any clarifying questions with regard to the presentation or the item. I see Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Roger, for the report. I'm just curious about with regards to the long-term lease, the term of twenty years. How did that get arrived at? And what, what benefits would we have if we said, for instance, ten years? And because I know there was some suggestion about what could be financed with this if it was sold, what could be financed with that money? So I'm wondering, what happened? Is it, is it not an attractive sale if we were, or deal, I should say, if we were to say ten years for the lease or twenty? And so anyway, I was just wondering how this, the twenty years got arrived at. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moore. That is a great question. The water system is a very long-lived asset. And when we were going through the negotiations for the amended lease and negotiating the five million dollars, it comes down to how, how the lease or would be able to capitalize their, their cost to maintain the system and do the capital improvements that we would require. And I think anything shorter than twenty years is challenging for them to capitalize their costs back and stay within, you know, that ceiling rate structure that I mentioned. So that is the main reason. But similarly, I think going too long, the twenty-five years, I think we can achieve it in twenty, and things can change, and we can reevaluate with having to go that longer period.
Councilmember Wei?
Uh, thank you. Actually, I have the same question as Councilmember Moore. So Roger, you just answered those questions. But I have a couple more, two other questions. How, does our staff, even with managing the lease, does our staff put time into it? So that's part of our, you know, resources too. My second question is, in your presentation, you mentioned that the staff now knows what worked well and what don't work, didn't work well with the previous lease. Could you elaborate a little bit what worked well and what did not?
All right, yeah, regarding staff time, it probably mainly falls, falls on me and then I have a project manager that assists with the, the implementate, the, monitoring the expenditures for the five million dollars that's improving the system now. So that's probably maybe a quarter of that project manager's time within my time on this item for your first question. In terms of what has worked well and what hasn't, you know, the lease was done in nineteen ninety-seven, and it, you know, it has quite a bit of antiquated terms. It just talks about industry standard and our best practices. And you know, you need to get more details and more definitive as to what that actually means. And so we would do that. There's a lot of, you know, the American Water Works Association and other, you know, industry resources that we would really drill down into is exactly what you would do. I think being more prescriptive as to what capital, what capital improvements are necessary year by year and what is expected is also necessary. And we've done the, an asset management plan for the system back in twenty nineteen. We know the condition of the system, we know what assets that we have. So we're just in a lot better place than I imagine they were back in nineteen ninety-seven when they made this lease then.
Okay, thank you. So one, one more question, but I don't know if you know the answer. Does the water company, whether it's San Jose or Cal, prefer to purchase it or they prefer to rent it? Do you have any sense of that?
Yeah, well, they're, yeah, they're in the business of, you know, owning and operating systems. So I would, I would lean towards they would, they would rather own it and control it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this point from our council. Let me ask, ask a question here. So with regard to the existing lease, it expires in October of two thousand and twenty-two. And if we were looking back and trying to make sure that capital maintenance occurs in an appropriate fashion over the course of the upcoming lease, what is something that we would do to ensure that we don't run into a situation like we did several years here in Cupertino for the existing lease to make sure that that capital maintenance occurs over the course of the lease?
Oh, very good question, Mayor. As that was really what we spent a lot of time on from twenty fourteen all the way through twenty nineteen. So it would, I think central to that would be the asset management plan that was, that was done back in, in early twenty nineteen. And it, it, it logged in all the assets of the system, what the condition was, what the probability of failure, consequence of failure, you know, from the water mains to the reservoirs to the service meters, the pump station, all those things were looked at. And from that, it went through, you know, lifespans and levels of service and what, what, what annual amount of capital improvements are necessary to keep the system at a, at a level of service with a, with reliable service? So we would, we would look at that, at that document and just prescribe what dollar amount is needed for each, each year of the lease. And it may escalate in future years of the lease, but we would be prescriptive in that effect. And I think we would also consider, you know, things, you know, when, when a water main breaks, then that, that expense is, expense is money, and it would come out of the, out of that capital improvement cost. I think having an amount of money that are earmarked for just emergency events such as that that doesn't take away from the, the annual capital expense that needs to occur to maintain the system is things that I would be looking forward to, including the new lease as well. So that, that is how I would, I would look through to keep that from happening in the future, Mayor. And, you know, it's really a lot of lessons learned from what we already know from the current lease.
All right, I know that operating the system is fairly complicated. There's a lot of administrative work. There's also, you know, the right to review rate increase requests. And so, you know, I get the sense that we're not really adequately staffed to take on the, the utility in-house. And so my question here is, what would it take to get to that point? Or are we so far away that we would need to go back and provide direction to get a clear set of steps that we would need to take to put us in a position but have that option in the future?
Yeah, I would think it'd be very challenging and not one that I would recommend for us to be able to analyze rate, rate structures with any, with any benefit above what the CPUC is able to do and the Office of Ratepayer Advocates and how they review the rates. And so what, you know, what, what we believe is a better, a better way is just, is just to require that the rates not be allowed to go any higher than those that are around us, that are reviewed by the CPUC.
Okay, well, my, and the city manager has his hand raised. Did you want to follow up from the staff response to that? You'll need to unmute yourself. Still muted, but I think, let me, let me see if I can ask you to unmute.
There, how about now?
There you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay, remuted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, also for getting me to unmute. Mr. Lee is correct. I think there would be a staff burden and obligation to go through the rate-setting process ourself. And that's what we learned as a city, I wasn't here then, prior to the prior lease agreement. And I think what's been proposed by your staff and legal counsel could thread the best of both worlds, where we're ensuring for our ratepayers, our residents, the lowest rates possible comparable to other service providers in the city of Cupertino. But I think the city might have, if the council so chose, the option to do not a rate analysis like PUC does or like we would be required to do under state law if we were the operator, but just to periodically do rate comparisons for what our residents are paying for all service provider systems, all three systems, and to make sure the council's aware of that information, the public's aware of that information, and to weigh in to the CPUC if and when we feel it's appropriate to do so. So I think we have two avenues of tack. One is by the highest maximum cost that we've already proven in the existing amended lease can be a viable service and an option the city could pursue that's optional of just doing periodic rate comparisons and choosing whether or not any weighing in to the CPUC may be in the best interests of our residents for the two private provider systems. But again, avoiding the detailed rate analysis that I think is beyond the capacity of our existing staff. And unless we were a rate operator, a service provider willing to follow the state mandates is probably an exercise we wouldn't want to go into.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it unheard of for? Is it unheard of for a local municipality to manage that?
Turn off the internet.
Oh, sorry, Roger, let me mute you. All right, so Mr. City Manager, is it unheard of for a local municipality to manage its own water utility? Does that happen?
No, there's many cities that do manage their own utilities. When I worked for the city of San Jose as Director of Environmental Services, we had what was then a small water utility that was city-operated. But the lion's share of water services in the city were provided by private service providers, two of them, not unlike Cupertino. I think for smaller cities, though, I think it is more common to have outsourced service providers. And what's unique, I think, for Cupertino is having this three-system configuration that we have two operators who own their systems and two-thirds of the city, and then we own the system in the remaining third.
Right.
I think that's a little more unique.
So let me ask you this. I mean, just from the perspective of trying to tie the rates to the other service providers in our city, I mean, why would that be considered a good thing in terms of trying to foster competition? I mean, if we own our own pipes and we have the ability to review and we can make an independent assessment and say, well, you know, we're not convinced that this is justified. I mean, why essentially, you know, kind of mandate a bit of a, I don't want to use any kind of loaded terms, but like kind of homogeneity of rates across the board? I mean, why would we do that if we have the option perhaps of reviewing independently? Because, you know, for example, right? I mean, the question that I had asked about, is it unheard of for other municipalities to do this? You know, like you said, it's not. And in fact, San Jose, like you had indicated, has a rather smaller part of their overall system managed by them in-house. Santa Clara has their own water utility. And I know it does come with its own set of responsibilities and burdens, but why would we abrogate our ability to review and thus possibly pass on a lower rate structure to at least some of our residents?
A couple of responses, and I know the staff report addressed this as well. First, any rate-setting process we do would be only for the city-owned system. We don't have the legal authority to do the rate-setting process for the privately operated systems that are in the other two-thirds of the city. So it's only in that westernmost portion, if we were to self-operate, that we could, we would have to do a rate-setting process of our own under state law. Even if we don't choose to operate it, and I think what your staff and council has tried to explain is, if we did lease out the operation of the western portion of the system that the city owns and we tried to do the rate-setting for that, we would likely pick up state burdens and obligations that we wouldn't have the operational staff and capacity to do. So I do think you're correct. There are three models to use here, but it only would affect us having any rate-setting capacity on the westernmost portion. What I'm intrigued with and what has worked for the last couple of years is rather than getting into the rate regulator point of view and the burdens that would entail under state law and the obligations that would entail if we were even able to do it over a private third party operating our system, by doing the linkage to the CUPC-approved rates, we are assuming that our city system is not, our residents are not being disadvantaged financially in the city-owned system by doing that comparative and through the prior lease negotiations and the passage of time that has proven to be effective. And it doesn't pick up the rate-setting hurdles and burdens for us as either an operator or a regulator.
Yeah, this is interesting because it's a pretty different approach than what I understood was our particular palette of options going inside them. I thought that, I just, I look at it differently. I mean, I look at it from the perspective of our residents not so much being disadvantaged by getting, you know, higher rate, but really the opportunity is to get something of a lower rate and to take a look at whether that could be delivered with effective service. So, well, let me ask you this before I move on to another hand. I do see other hands are raised with regard to additional follow-up questions. But if we were to try to look into this, what would it require with regard to us keeping the option open of bringing in management of, you know, this part of our system in-house in order to, you know, incur some of the benefits of being able to run the utility, not just manage the rate increase mechanism, but also to, you know, take ownership and maintenance of the infrastructure? Well, what would that require?
Roger, if I may, Roger, if I may, jump in in front of you. You know, I've only been on board for what this is day four. It's not like I fully analyzed all of our water utility system here yet in these few days. So I am somewhat intrigued, as long as we don't jeopardize what is our recommendation to council and what we were taking as some understanding of a preferred path for the city was to move ahead with the lease window and while we're developing the terms for the RFP and a possible sample lease, that I would use that window of opportunity to dive in and further understand our prior exploration of the costs incurred by the city if we were to self-operate. And I think there's really three issues that, you know, today and yesterday, that I've discovered is I'd want to understand the state rate-setting requirements more fully if we were to self-operate our system and what the burdens and challenges of that would be. Second, I do think we have some historical data that we'd want to update in terms of comparative operating expenses, in terms of the relatively small scale of our system. And just using the San Jose municipally-run system, that's 100,000 customers. Ours is 4,500 connections. Even if you multiply that to three people per home, that's only 15,000 customers. So we have orders of scale there that I'd want to explore. Plus, I think the unstudied part is what have been the rate impacts for smaller municipally-operated systems? And are they actually able to offer lower rates to their residents, given the burdens of state regulations on rate-setting and avoiding any general fund subsidy? So I think that's an unaddressed part of the question that I would like to look at over the next two to four weeks as we're proceeding with developing prospective lease terms to bring back to council for consideration.
No, I think we should look at core competencies as well, see where we're at right now versus, you know, where we would need to get. You know, I'll just throw in a very quick comment. I mean, what would prevent us from going and partnering with the neighboring jurisdiction that runs its own, you know, water utility as well on that kind of front? So it's just a thought that I'll let hang there. Councilmember Way and Councilmember Moore, you both have your hands up. Did you have some follow-up questions before we take this to our members of the public, Councilmember Way?
No, actually, that's fine.
Councilmember Moore, did you have any? Okay, so go ahead and go to our members.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lowered my hand. I just, I think that this is a question for our city attorney, for Chris, and he can get back to us when we need to make a decision or maybe we're going to be doing that tonight. I'm looking under the FPPC with a public generally exception for public officials with conflict of interest. And I'm curious because it was just mentioned that we've got this division within the city of these three different zones. And if we could, if you have some comments on that, it looks like they did revise it in 2020. And I just want to make sure that we're all able to vote on this. Thank you.
Yeah. So I would, so there's kind of a basic fact about how much of the city is served by the Cupertino system that I think would be important to know?
It's roughly a third, Chris.
Okay, it is roughly a third. Then, you know, I can confirm this, but I think the public generally exception would apply.
And what does that mean with regard to requirement of recusal?
So it would mean that members that are customers of the water system would not need to recuse themselves.
Okay, but it would require some further follow-up. But we're being asked to provide some direction on follow-ups and options that would affect this. So would that affect a nice decision? I guess is the question because it is this particular part of it.
It would potentially affect tonight's vote and indeed this discussion if there were actually a conflict, but I don't believe there is one.
Okay. Abundance of caution advice or anything like that with respect to, you know, which feels for anyone who's affected by this water system directly. Well, that's a question for you, Chris. I mean, there's no sense that, out of an abundance of caution, we should ask anybody who is affected directly by this water system to recuse themselves or suggest it or anything like that.
Yeah, at this point, I don't have any information that would suggest that that's required.
And I do recall for what it's worth that this question came up for the amended restated lease and a council person that identified living in the area and decided that recusal was not necessary.
Okay. Okay, so let's go on. Alexandria, you have your hand raised. Alexandra Barnhill of Jarvis City, I believe, outside council for this matter. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to advise the council that the public generally exception applies if 15% or more of residential real property is similarly situated. And as Roger indicated, about one-third of the city's residents are served with the system. So based on that information, it would suggest that nobody, you know, would receive a distinct advantage by voting in this evening's discussion and that no recusal is required.
Well, great, thank you for the identification of the specific threshold there. Councilmember Moore, did you have a follow-up?
I just want to thank Alexandra for clarifying that because that was the change that I was seeing and I wanted to see what, how that actually applies because they moved from 25 to 15. And I'm curious about that because we have some other issues that it might end up applying for. So thank you.
Great, all right. So let's go on to our members of the public. And again, I'll repeat that before the first member of the public concludes with comments, you'll need to have your hand raised in order to be called on. Our three hands raised at this point are Jean Bedore, John Ennells, and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, honorable council members, staff, and welcome to interim city manager Greg Larson. My name is Jean Bedore and I am a resident of Cupertino. I'm here to comment on these options for continued lease, sale, or city operation of the water system. I agree with the staff recommendation to pursue continuation of a lease at this time. However, I would urge the city to consider limiting that lease to 10 years rather than 20 years. My concern is that the environment for utilities is in flux. San Jose Water Company was acquired by Connecticut Water Services in 2019. Further consolidation may occur in the future. The economics of water utilities as well as other utilities are changing. 10 years covers two council cycles. 20 years covers four council cycles. I question binding future councils that far into the future. In addition, this asset is valued at $55 million in 2018. It will provide minimal revenue to the city. It's simply a service. And frankly, it doesn't make sense to me to have three, yes, three separate water companies for a city the size of Cupertino. Is this the best use of city resources at a time when most of our infrastructure and municipal buildings are aging and need deferred maintenance as well as expansion for future city growth? Now I realize, sale of the property is quite complicated and it would take four years or so to accomplish. So in addition to continuing the lease arrangement, can the city begin getting the authorizations to potentially sell the water system? I urge you to approve the staff recommendation, but consider it for 10 years and add guidance to initiate steps to consider sale of the water service. I think there's better use of our money. Thank you.
I have a quick follow-up question. Where did you find that information with regard to what you describe as the valuation of the system?
It's in the staff report.
Okay.
Last paragraph.
Very good, thank you very much. All right, so we are on to John Ennells. Welcome, John.
My name is John Ennells, a customer of the city-owned water company. The current lessee was decided at a meeting of the council July 21, 1997. Considerable opposition to this lease was expressed by residents in a packed chamber. The city had operated the water company for 35 years with no problems. The rates charged to residents were significantly lower than those charged by the two private companies. The council thought this was unfair. Rather than challenge the private companies to do better in their operations, they proposed to allow them to pay the city a considerable sum, 6.7 million, take over operations and raise our rates 25%. A motivating factor was the city was prevented from using the water company reserves for other purposes. Despite the low rates, the company had built up over a million dollars in reserve funds that the city desperately wanted to get their hands on. This represented about a year's company revenue. So by leasing the company, the city got the lessees money and the reserve. Sensing the issue was lost, I suggested that the city give the contract to the bidder who forecasted lower rates for the customer, not the one who paid the city more upfront money. This met with some agreement on the council and within a minute, it was approved by a three-to-two vote. The meeting broke up and I was approached by a San Jose water executive. He told me what I did not know was that this was a done deal with Cal Water. The pretense of open bidding was to satisfy the legal requirements. Now he had to get busy and actually prepare to take over the system. They had done absolutely no pre-work. My concerns today, the city staff report contains the same type of arguments as the one 24 years ago. I challenged the statements in option three, city operation. We have 35 years of experience of successful city operation. There were no stories of high cost of operation, risks, inability to find qualified staff, period. Now I see the criteria for evaluating proposals again based on the amount of money the city can get out of the lessee. And you've given away any control over pricing, the most direct benefit to the customer. What I am asking, seriously consider operating the water company. We operate the sewer system efficiently every day. Why not the water company? Find the one and a half employees we learned at the meeting it took to run it, not nine. A proper proposal should be considered, not this option three that has no data to back up its fears of taking over responsibility. Secondly, change your evaluation criteria to make benefits to those served by the water company an important part of the decision upfront. And three, actively pursue operators other than Cal Water and San Jose Water. The city of Sunnyvale was suggested as a possibility by council member Sinks in 2019. Please remember that every dollar the city takes in from granting the lease and operating the system comes from the pockets of the 4,500 residents that are served, not from a magical lessee who prints money. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy. Welcome, Peggy.
Evening, council members and staff. I don't, I was going to say that I support the lease option, but having heard from the previous speaker and also the possibility from city manager Larson, that looking into it might be a possibility that interests me. So all I have to ask you is to tell you my concerns. If you decide that we are going to do it ourselves, consider the geology of Cupertino with respect to the water pipes and earthquake risks. On the west side of town, there are two faults, the Berkle and the Montavista, that run through that, that water area. And, you know, wonder how that affects the water lines. In terms of leasing, ensure that the specific improvements are done. Who will verify that they're done and done properly? Will there be a completion date each year or can they just keep postponing it? Will there be penalties and consequences if it's not done annually, what the improvements? I'm concerned that specifying just a dollar amount versus specifying a completed improvement item could mean that they could just jack up the prices and then instead of a whole complete pipeline, you get a valve. And also specifying specific completion dates so they don't continually slip these annual improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Well, Peggy is our last speaker from the public and so I'll bring this back over to council. With council's forbearance here, I do see one of our participants in the meeting has his hand raised, Rob Sealy. Rob, did you want to make a comment before we had some follow up deliberation or?
I just wanted to chime in really quick, maybe for the opportunity to say that Cal Water Service is proud of the service for decades and provided to the city, duty worker given the city's competitive request for proposal regarding the water system and determining if we're able to provide or not.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Rob. So you're a little bit tingly in the, in the microphone, but I gather you're from Cal Water and you're very happy to provide service to portion of the city. Was that a shot of your comment? So let's bring it back to council. We do have the default motion that I would like to see if anyone would be willing to bring or if they had their own motion that they would like to bring. I don't see hands raised for the default and so I'm going to go ahead and suggest the motion. It won't be the default motion, but I would like to authorize initiation of process under PUC code section 10061 to approve a future long-term lease of real property that may be effective as early as October 1st, 2022. However, I would like to explore the possibility of having a shorter than 20-year term of a lease. It could be as short as 10, it could be 12, with possibly a renewal option available that would be in the city's favor in terms of not being an automatic invocation by the lesssee. What I'd like to also see is some follow up with regard to what it would take to manage our utility or get towards that point. I don't think we could really get to that point, you know, feasibly or expect to, you know, within the year period between where we are right now and when the current lease expires. But I do think that we do have the opportunity to look at it, especially given the fact that we have a new perspective and potential lease coming up. One reason, well, let me go ahead and deliberate when deliberation happens. So, so that's my motion. Would anyone be willing to second that motion? I see hands raised, council member Wei and council member Moore in that order. Councilmember Wei, did you want to second the motion?
Yes, I do like the, the shorter term with the option to renew, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. So did you want to make any comments on the motion at this point, councilmember Wei?
Yes, I do. I like it because like Jean said, you know, things change and Mayor Paul, you proposed that we, you know, explore the options of operating ourselves, but at the same time, we can also explore the option of selling it. So that with a 10 or 12-year lease with option to renew, that gives the city more flexibility. And I do believe we could pursue both options pending investigations or how practical it could be. But I also have a first, a question that I didn't ask before was, is the lease agreement that is, are we going to go out for bid or is it, we're going to waste the San Jose Water or Cal Water or like someone mentioned, comment mentioned, John mentioned that it could be Sunnyvale? So how, how is this going to be handled?
Well, I'll answer that as the maker of motion. This would be a bidding process, councilmember Wei.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. So with regards to maintenance, is there some way, and I'm just going to assume that there is, that we can have it worked into our agreement, that there is benchmarks to maintenance that would be met each year and, and that we have some, some way of ensuring that that happens? And if they don't meet, meet those benchmarks, that there, there is some repercussions for whoever has this lease?
Absolutely. Those were good points made by Peggy and things that we're actively thinking about and would, would include in the proposed lease.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, did you have any further?
Yes. Okay, so I am a little concerned about, because we have these three systems, if we would possibly end up with a situation if we were to take over this system where, whether their rates were higher or lower, but they would be significantly different from those of the other zones in the city, Cal Water or San Jose Water over on the, on the east side. And if we do discover that, how do you balance that issue out? Can that be done or is it out of our hands? And that's the same with when we go to lease because when we, when we started this process, I, the first question I had in my mind is what's the difference in what each household is paying across the city between these three different organizations? And I don't, I don't feel as though we were given that information. Maybe we were, but I'm curious, you know, what, what are we paying for rates? And then if we, is there any difference between if we go out to bid and have leased, leased the system for, for what the people are going to be paying or does it matter if we're, if we take over the system, which, which would be better for, for the rate payers there?
Yeah, I think it's a good time to ask that question as to whether we're providing direction under this resolution with regard to review of rate increases. My understanding is that it's neutral. The resolution's neutral as to whether a provision like that is in an upcoming lease for bid. Is that correct?
I'll jump in here, Mr. Mayor, and Alexandra or Chris can certainly correct. My understanding is under no circumstance does the city have any authority to rate regulate for the two privately owned systems on the eastern side of the city. The greatest voice we could ever have would be to the rate regulator, which is the CPUC for those systems. For the western system, which the city does own, if we operate it, we will be forced into a rate regulation process that is separate from the CPUC, but it is state mandated and has its own requirements. If we sell the system, it would be just like the other two privately owned systems and we'd have no rate regulatory control. And the gray area that the mayor has discussed is if we lease it, but we try to retain some rate regulation over a private operator of that system, which the city previously found was problematic prior to the amendment in 2018, 19. But that's the gray area. I do think in terms of councilmember Moore's question, that's just the sort of additional information we would want to explore in this six-week window to keep on track for the long-term lease RFP process.
Yeah. So I, you know, I'm reading the resolution and it does reference our December 17th, 2019 resolution in which we basically gave up our rate regulating authority under this current lease. And so my question, and I think you got at it, Greg, is whether we're doing the same thing by authorizing this resolution. I don't see that we are. I, I don't see that we're specifically giving direction that a new lease is going to essentially say to the lesssee by virtue of this resolution that we're putting rate regulating and approval authority under the CPUC like we have right now. So I, I think by acknowledging that that's something of a gray area, as you call it, that it's, we're not, we're not giving direction on that right now. And to speak to councilmember Moore's point with regard to uniformity of rate across the city, that basically is part of the idea that we would want it uniform, which is basically to say, let the CPUC review and we would potentially put into the lease, the new lease that is, a provision saying that rates don't go any higher than the other two operated parts of our system within the jurisdictional boundaries. But, you know, again, I think we're keeping it neutral right now and we're leaving it to another day to potentially give direction as to whether we want to retain that approval authority. So that, at least that's my understanding. I'm going to put that on the record as my understanding of what we're putting forward here. And so if, if anybody that's advising us or from staff sees it otherwise, please, you know, correct that. But I, I think it's neutral in regard to, you know, that particular provision.
Mayor, I do want to be clear on that. I do think the advice of council and staff has been having that rate regulatory process managed by the city for the city-owned lease system is problematic and proved problematic previously. I'm comfortable with your direction to allow another chance to review that issue to make sure that the new legal counsel and myself are in concurrence on that and our advice to you and the council.
Okay. Yeah, let's leave it for another day because, you know, I think that perhaps we're not really seeing eye to eye on the potential benefits and the rights. Councilmember Moore, did you have a follow up on any points?
Yeah, I just want to mention that when we're looking at equity of rates across the city, that if we do take on the system, that the city would be incurring costs, I'm going to assume for that, for that maintenance ourselves. So it's not, it's not free to, to the city as a whole. And so the, a rate might look the same across the city if we, in, in that scenario, but overall, you would essentially have the other rate payers in the other sections of the city helping to shoulder the, the cost for, for the west side.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's a matter of how it's, you know, costed and benefited, right? I mean, if, if our, if our costs end up exceeding the benefits, then, then yes, you know, we're going to pass on higher rates, right, to our own, you know, managed utility. But, but if in fact, after putting in the sweat equity in it, we're able to cover those costs and pass on savings, then that's a different story. But we don't know. We really don't know at this point without, you know, conducting an evaluation. You know, from my perspective, I, I don't know how we conduct an objective evaluation, right? You know, in, in terms of now, well, the preference is that we not do that. But I mean, I, I look at neighboring jurisdictions and they do it and maybe it's, you know, not the most pleasant walk in the park and, you know, it comes with headaches, but they are passing on to their, to their residents. So I, I think, I think this is a discussion for another, but I, I'm not really prepared to be able to put forth, you know, specific proposals as to how we go about dealing with that objectivity, you know, based issue, right? So, you know, I, I think just let, let's, let's go back and have that discussion because at the end of the day, I, I just, I want to do what's right for the residents and be able to put forward objective advice and say, you know, it actually is possible, you know, but we would need to go to a neighboring jurisdiction and take a look, what is it that you're doing? What's your, what's your core expertise? You know, what is it, you know, in the suite of work that needs to be done? Where are we right now in Cupertino in our expertise? I, I mean, I think the issue is basically that we're basically, we don't run the utility right now, right? And so if we go and ask, you know, our staff, you know, go and tell us what it would take to run the utility, it's not necessarily a neutral position, right, that we're asking for in terms of the advice. So I think we need to go back and think about how we go about, you know, gleaning that information effectively on behalf of the residents. Councilmember Moore, you still have your?
Yeah, I just, going back to who would pay for that maintenance, I think that, you know, I'm expecting this scenario where, where the city as a whole would do that, but actually it could be that you would say that the, the people that are using those, the service that are on those, on those lines, that they're responsible for that and that the cost goes right back to them. So it hasn't been clarified to me which, which way that maintenance would be covered.
Right. I mean, my presumption would be that it comes out of the utility itself that's being serviced. Alexandra, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to any points?
I did. I just wanted to respond to councilmember Moore's question about who pays. And if the city were operating the system itself, then under proposition 218, it could only charge the recipients of the service for those utility costs. Now, if the city wanted to use general fund money to subsidize costs, you know, in order to make equivalent rates, it could potentially do that. But in general, the customers are the only ones who should be paying the costs of service.
Great. Thank you. Well, I'm just going to make a final comment with regard to this. I mean, you, you know, I think that as a jurisdiction, if we get into a utility and we already own this infrastructure and we're able to successfully manage it, even pass on, you know, hopefully not just modest, you know, savings, but, you know, successfully manage it. I think it gives us a lot of options as a jurisdiction. You know, I analogize this to what was, you know, basically a years-long political struggle to create a library expansion. It didn't just end with the support of our current council and the widespread support of our residents. I also wanted to make sure that we had a particular bidding type of process, design, build, bid. And, you know, I fought, I fought to get that done and I think that puts us in a much better position as a city to be looking at capital projects where we're either, you know, significantly enhancing buildings or we're making new buildings. I think that puts us in a similar position if we take on a utility. Because if you look at something like the energy equation right now, people, you know, talk about infrastructure, we're getting energy from silicon, electric, clean energy, but we don't actually have the infrastructure. If we can, you know, kind of in-house infrastructure management, so to speak, you know, within one context, then I think that it makes it, it makes the world much bigger with regard to what we could be doing 10 or 15 years down the line in terms of maybe we want to bank energy, maybe, you know, gas, solar, maybe we want to be able to transmit, you know, over our own infrastructure, you know? I know sometimes a truck runs into a wire, you know, like going across the street and we kind of wonder, well, why aren't we undergrounding? Why is it when, you know, this wire got hit one time, you know, we're not raising it higher? Why isn't it improving? And so that, that's kind of where I'm thinking, you know, in terms of the good of our jurisdiction and the wherewithal of what we can do. And that's why I put that into the motion to look into it in good faith and try to look at it objectively for the, for the good of the jurisdiction and the residents. So that's all I'll say about that. I don't see any other hands raised from our, from our council. And so I'll go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on the motion on two.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.